Going to open the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting for March 16, 2023. The listings of the matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting, not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the law. We have a hearing for 0 and 592 Plymouth Street. It's a continued hearing for retail office with grading and drainage, peer review report, and letter from Pat Brennan will be discussed. We have discussions about 8 Hilldale Lane. Joel Bean wants to know how a single-family home or could a single-family home require full site development? Update on secretarial interviews. We have administrative report for 0 and 314 Plymouth Street and 416 Plymouth Street. We have some mail from Pembroke, Canton, Bridgewater, and Halifax. We have correspondence from 2383 CV 00012 Leaders Companies LLC versus Town of Halifax Planning Board. It only says Halifax on the agenda, but it is the planning board. Bills from Halifax Express Newspaper, invoice A11725C1, and meeting minutes from January 19 and February 2. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Oh, and this meeting will be recorded, thank you, by Area 58 and posted on YouTube. Area 58 Halifax. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to start with discussions and bills. If anybody has any preference, I don't know if Joel is here yet, so maybe we'll do the Joel Bean for the 8 Hilldale Lane discussion. I don't know who he is either. Apparently, he came into the Board of Health Office and was asking if he could build a single-family on Hilldale Lane, and that is really the extent of what I know.
No time for any of these?
No. So 0 and 592, remember, we voted to not do that so that we could take them in order? Do you remember that?
Okay.
Or talked about it. I don't know if it was a vote necessarily, but we all decided.
Did he request, Mr. Bean, did he request to be put on our agenda for discussion?
Yes, he did. And I didn't think that it was a big deal to just discuss it with him, right? And I haven't met him. Peggy reached out to get the name because at first she just knew that it was somebody that wanted to come in front of us. So I just figured, why not, right? Let the... We are going to review 0 and 592 Plymouth Street at 7:30 because that's when Pat Brennan can get here.
Oh.
Okay. So I guess we'll get right to this secretarial interview. I'm going to read this letter into record, and then we can discuss it.
Sure.
We have a letter from Cody Haddad. He's our town administrator. He sent us a letter rehiring support staff for the planning board. He's writing to, in regarding the administrative support staff for the planning department, as you know, there have been vacancies in both the planning and the zoning departments. Considering each position is only 15.5 hours per week, I felt it would be beneficial to both boards and from a recruitment standpoint to combine the positions and hire one full-time staff to provide administrative support to both planning and zoning. As you are aware, both departments have similar aspects and the skill set required for the positions line quite well. There would also be a major benefit of having an individual in Town Hall full-time to provide planning and zoning support to the residents of Halifax. Should the board be agreeable to this initiative, I would request that you appoint one individual from the planning board whom will serve as representative on the interview team. Should you have any additional questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. I apologize for being unable to attend your March 16 meeting, but look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Cody Haddad. So I guess we'll start. Go ahead. What do you think?
Well, as we discussed before, it does make a lot of sense to have somebody, at least one person, full-time here as opposed to, you know, listening to the tape. Well, just as an example, Joanne was only in on Tuesdays till 2:00, you know, and whatnot. So I do think that makes sense. The only concern I have too is like our meetings at night. If this person, you know, male or female, this person is 8:00 to 4:00, you know, Monday through Thursday, and then what? How do they work it? Half a day on Friday or till noon on Friday, something like that? Holiday, you would have to somehow schedule our meetings in as well as the ZBA's.
Well, probably one of the hiring requirements would be that they'd have to attend every first and third Thurs-- well, and then they'll have to do zoning on the second Monday.
So what does that mean for hours during the day? Kind of defeats, takes away the purpose of having somebody here full-time because they won't be here full-time unless, unless there's some kind of stipulation of, you know, it's from ages ago.
Right.
You know, but that will involve, I should think, overtime and all that kind of thing.
Unless there was salary, and then we're going to get into benefits and vacation time and sick time.
Well, the 30 to 12, there'd be benefits anyway.
So how did that work for Joanne and Alana?
They adjusted their schedules.
So they did the same hours?
They did the same hours if they knew they had to work. This Thursday night, they adjusted their hours during the day. So other than that?
It seems like that's the best alternative, they adjust their hours, I think.
The same one, full-time person?
Yeah.
So that's a lot of adjusting. What do you think? Three hours here, twice a week, that's 12?
Well, twice a month.
Twelve, twice a month.
Yeah.
Then another three or four.
Yeah.
So you think you're looking at?
You're looking at 16 hours in meetings. Right?
16 hours.
Possible, possibly, I'm sorry, possibly 12 hours in meetings. Possible, because do we have to pay them for four hours when they come out here? Or do they only get paid that year? I don't know if that's not union, or I'm just not sure. Not sure. That, and do we have to ask the town for another full-time employee, or?
I asked Cody that, you know, if in fact, because currently, you would have to go in front of, well, wage personnel for lack of a learning.
I thought we voted that away two years ago.
Well, that's what I meant, type of board, you know, to approve a full-time person, you know?
Okay. Well, it's funny because we talk about it and then we don't.
Yeah.
But I would think that it would have to be on the warrant. And if that's the case?
You're creating a position.
Yeah.
Then you're waiting until?
Yeah, you're waiting an awful long time to get somebody here.
Well, I agree with that, but I'm saying, does it have to be? Because if you combine the two jobs, now you have new job descriptions, and now you have new pay scale, you have new vacation, you have?
Yeah, but is that our call, or is it selectmen in town administration?
I think it's the town.
That's what the?
The residents.
The selectmen said also it would come under the, basically, the purview of the selectmen, you know, whether or not it would have to be approved and go through where you're creating a position, like you said, that may be required, in which case we'd have to wait until May.
Yeah, well.
Ouch.
We're doing right over there now.
What do we do from now until then, you know, between the both boards?
That's a lot.
Besides drown. But, and then I said to him too, because we had discussed at our last meeting, I said to?
Mr. Secretary.
You know, that we had discussed at the last meeting, you know, maybe a couple members of the board would jump in, let's get the ball rolling, let's at least, you know, look at some applications and see. And he seemed to think that we're basically, it's the responsibility of the selectmen that they would at least discuss it and take care of it and get back to us, so.
But with the planning board, it's different because the planning board's in charge of their own secretary.
And that's what would be changed?
Right.
You know?
So currently, right now, that's where it stands.
Yeah, he seems to think that it would, at least the interview process would be handled by that office. Not saying that, like in the letter, one, two of us, whatever, could certainly participate. Why not? It seems to only make sense, but I think you've got, it sounds to me like it's?
It's not my expertise, you know, to hire a secretary. I wouldn't know how to, you know.
Okay.
Him or her or whoever, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Well.
In a way.
Yeah, anyway, so I think that, I think that we should remain in hiring power of the planning board secretary, and I think that we should really put our heads together and get it done.
Sure. Hire somebody if they want to change it down the road, change it down the road.
Yeah.
Whether it be the same person that we, yeah, that if we hire a person and the ZBA hires a person, we're going to let one of them go, and then, if they can even create a full-time position, or they may both say, look, no, these are my hours, these are what I wanted, you may run into a problem.
So what do you say in this letter with one person for both jobs?
Yes.
You're thinking that's going to be kind of tough with all the leaders and all the things?
Well, if it can be worked out, I don't know. Like you said, it's a lot of juggling and scheduling.
And then when there was two, it was different, you know?
Yep.
And you knew right up front, okay, I need the second, you know, fourth Thursday off or the, you know, whatever, okay, so you knew right up front where.
I think I like the two secretaries for the idea that one handles the zoning board and one handles the planning board, and then they know what their job is, and we're following along with what our current wage personnel is.
Well, so he's thinking it's going to be a tough hire for somebody just for the part-time like that?
I don't think it would.
Well, no, he doesn't really say that. He just seems, I get the impression, my impression is that one person would be able to handle both where they're so related, closely related to each other, you'd have one person here, more hours during the day to be able to handle questions, do the scheduling, handle the juggling and whatnot, as opposed to two separate secretaries part-time. It's, I can see the benefit from both ways. Yes, it'd be great to have somebody here more time within the same rough two.
It's going to end up costing the town more money too, which means that the resident should be asked at a town meeting, and again, we don't want to wait that long. My opinion is the resident should be asked at a town meeting. If we're going to make another full-time position that possibly has pension, that possibly, that's a lot to just do, you know?
So what's our recommendation to them? What do you?
I think we keep it the same, and I think that you and I should do the interviews, like, maybe you can make the calls and I'll be there, like, because I juggle with work. I can schedule the time for the interviews, but I don't have a lot of time to do all those calls too. Sorry, my phone's buzzing.
All right, is this something we have to get back to him on?
I'll let him know.
Okay.
So are we going to just keep it the way it is? And we'll get these interviews done? You can make, do you have a copy of the?
Of the address?
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Unless, did you send it?
Well, they're in the office, so I'll show you.
What do you think, Rick? I don't know. I can see advantages of this.
I can see his point, I can see, like I said.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe it's a tough call. It's nice having somebody there full-time, but then again, you got to figure the meetings, you know, if she's doing zoning, or he or she.
And it's, how realistic could it be that you'd have one person be able to juggle a schedule like that? Well, you know, Pam does it, but she doesn't, I mean, Pam would carry it.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's just the one.
It's the one board, yeah.
Right, one board. I can definitely see the advantage of having somebody there more often during the day to be able to process things and handle it and whatnot.
Well.
Is it worth it running by the selectmen too, is what they think?
Is it? I'm sorry.
Selectmen have any input on what their opinion would be?
I've spoken with Mr. Haddad, I haven't spoken with anybody else. I have, you had a discussion.
I don't know, if it isn't broke, don't fix it so it's worked so far.
I just think it's going to be an issue like with the pay and the town and the taxpayers.
The only other thing is, is it worth, maybe someone was going to the selectmen's meeting or meet with them to at least voice our opinion on our concerns and whatnot before we, you know, go ahead and?
Well, I mean, every week is another week that we don't have a secretary, and I really think that maybe like on tomorrow or Monday, I could show you these applications, we can make the appointments, and we can hire somebody. And I think that would be?
Would the zoning board be on their own to hire somebody?
We're not in charge of that. I think the selectmen are in charge of that, or maybe the building inspector, I don't know.
So these people who need to interview the job, are they thinking of both? Are they thinking of what you're talking about?
I only have them for the planning board.
Good.
Okay, what was the job post that has that would make a big difference?
Well, we have that in one of our files, probably in our office, but it is just for the planning board. And we have applications, just eight, somewhere in that range.
So there's another big advantage, is eight people to know right up front, you know, that it's a part-time position, it's, you know, going to be two nights a week.
We advertised for it in January or February, I want to say. Like, it was either the end of January or the beginning of February, something like that.
Means there's something to be changed down the road when it's coming towards?
Closer towards May or something, if they want to change it. You know, I'd certainly be open to a discussion, I don't know if that's what they want to do, but between now and May, I think it's a lot to wait.
There it is.
Me too.
I'd suggest then that we send a letter off to the selectmen saying that we'd like to take this time now, between now and any changes, to at least do the interview process, interview people, come up with a recommended one or two people, whatever, for the position or a person for the position, and then discuss it with them at that point. Or just go ahead and, you know, just let them know that we're going, but at least let them know that we're going to stop the process, I should.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, they know, so, okay, then I'll do that. Start process, and I will meet with you.
Does it follow the motion or anything? Were you all good to go? We're good to go.
I think we're agreeing to start the process, right? If you want to do a motion, then?
No, no, that's okay. Can we announce at the beginning, you know, we do have a quorum and whatnot, but it's going to be the three of us voting on this, we have, we're good?
You mean the three, I'm sorry?
At the beginning of the meeting?
We, did you say that we're all here?
Did you do a call of who's present and who's going to be voting on things?
I did not. I did not.
Okay.
So tonight, we have Barkina, McMarry, and Amy Troop.
I just want to make sure, because I'm all co-hosting.
We've got to wait the minute.
Yes. So that's that, and next on the list, so why don't we do the administrative reports? For 0 and 314 Plymouth Street, a $1,000 deposit was submitted to the planning board and a revolving account was set up, so the project is sent to peer review, and the same thing with 416 Plymouth Street. You guys went through the mail, did you see anything that you would like to discuss?
Any education on how long or anything? I knew we were tossing that around the last time. How long it would take, week, two weeks, for them to do the peer review?
We can ask Pat Brennan tonight when he's, oh, there he is. Hey, Pat.
Pat, how backed up are you there?
0 and 314 Plymouth Street, I sent in yesterday the review on that one.
Right.
And the 416, there's something even earlier today. The farm stand that they're proposing, there's really nothing engineering there to really review. However, if you are approving that, I would just approve the 38,000 square feet that they have carved out for that farm stand area. I would just approve that because they have cleared out further when they put a new septic in. If they're going to use that land for something, then they should come back to you to say what they're going to use that for.
The whole lot has been changed, so that site plan, we've been putting people off for a little over a year right now. We need to have drainage on the whole site because the site where that farm stand will be is also cleared conservation land.
I can ask for the drainage, I can ask for the drainage conditions.
Where was the septic located on that?
Something behind?
It's out back.
Behind the building?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not really, it has nothing to do with the farm stand up front?
No.
Oh.
My guess is there's something probably failed in that room.
Yeah, exactly what happened. The dial over through conservation and Board of Health and everything else, so it should be all set there. As far as drainage, I don't think they changed anything from original. It's been there forever.
All the trees and everything, and then the new grading and clearing conservation doesn't change the drainage at all? I mean, there's puddles everywhere when you go by, then it's not draining anywhere.
That's the drainage out there, just the way all those retention areas are set up. You get a lot of rain, they fill up with water, and then they go away after a while.
I didn't see a retention area.
Well, it's behind the bank out there, if you look at it, that's what they have.
Yeah, they're showing on the, like, this basin, this drainage basin, if you have a?
Yeah. Because they, of course, when it rains, they get water in them, and then they have so much time that they dissipate, just like they're meant to do.
And then is Joel Bean here? No? Okay. I don't know how we would talk about it without him for 8 Hilldale Lane, so I'll hold that. And what time is it?
I have 2:40.
Okay. Do you want a motion to pay that bill?
Is that the only one, Helped Up Express?
Yep, that's it.
I'll make a motion to pay something Halifax Express in voice A11725CL, 01314 Monpont Street, for a amount of $90.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can go first.
We have meeting minutes from January 19 and February 2. Did you guys have a chance?
February 2 came in probably five minutes before I left my house, so I didn't get a chance to look at that, but.
I think that was, that was the January 19 one.
Was it the 19?
Yes.
I thought it was the February.
The 19 one, Caroline.
That was the 19. That was 21 pages.
I don't know why. Like, it's not all a hearing, but it's crazy, it's a lot of work.
It is crazy.
It's basically, it looks like a?
I will get through.
Playback.
We have, we got it set, 2176.
So we'll do January 19 at the next meeting on April 6?
6.
6, and then February 2.
I'll set, I'll make a motion so I'm able to?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
Oh, no, no, to vote on that for the next meeting.
Oh, okay. I don't really think we need to do that, but I'll, do we need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the February 2 meeting minutes, do you guys, did you guys look at all of those?
I didn't even have to look at them.
Okay. So you want to do these all minutes for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll do the minutes next meeting.
Is that the one?
And then, I guess, do you guys have the mail folder? I think maybe just the decision letter for Halifax zoning board decision letter, just read that out loud to the public, and then we can probably be ready for 592. The Halifax zoning board of appeals on February 16 wrote this letter for Derek Lewis of 172 Monpont Street in Halifax. Dear Mr. Luke Lewis, at a meeting held on Monday, February 13, 2023, the Halifax zoning board of appeals voted to grant your petition number 985 for a special permit for an addition to an existing building locating at 172 Monpont Street in Halifax, M.A., 02338. Said property is owned by Derek Lewis of 172 Monpont Street, as shown on assessing map 84, Lot 1A, Book 47132, page 135. You, the applicant, sought a special permit to construct a 30 by 45-foot barn in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, section 16712F4, density regulations for specific uses. Area is zoned residential. The board voted unanimously 500 to waive the onsite inspection and granted your special permit. A motion was made by member Peter Parcellin and seconded by Josiah Nasrallah to approve your petition number 985, with all five voting members, Josiah Nasrallah, Gerald Joy, Peter Parcellin, Tina Kenyon, and Robert Duggan in favor. The special permit was granted based on the testimony presented at the hearing. Any changes from what was presented and approved must be brought back before the zoning board of appeals. Please be advised that all variances under our special permits shall comply with all the rules and regulations and codes of the Town of Halifax. The decision shall not take effect until a copy of the decision certified by the town clerk to effect. That 20 days have elapsed since this decision was filed, and a certified copy indicating such registry recording has been filed by the board. Sincerely, Josiah. I think that's the only one that pertains to Halifax. There's really nothing on this, but, yeah, not to read that. Okay. You guys ready for 592? 0 and 592? 0 and 592 Plymouth Street hearing for the retail, we are ready for you.
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Very good. Neil T. Allen here for 592 0 Plymouth Street. Looking, I have an arrow?
We'll sit.
With?
Benassi Associates.
So we, last time we were here to hire a traffic engineer to do the traffic study, which we have to. He has a small presentation for everyone, as well as, we, Mr. Brennan did a review engineer, reviewed our plan that we provided. He gave some remarks, some areas that we need to update our plan for, and we're, if you guys like it, I can have Daniel do his presentation for the traffic study.
I think that would be a better idea.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr.. I'm Daniel Smith, I'm a traffic engineer, Benassi Associates, and we are the traffic consultants for this project. And this is a continuous project, so you're fairly familiar with the project. As you heard previously, the project will consist of the construction of approximately 5,000 square feet of parcel space, with the first quarter being 2,500 square feet of retail, and the second story being 2,500 square feet of office space. Our traffic study was prepared, our traffic study was prepared in accordance with NASTA guidelines and the standards of the traffic engineering and transportation professionals. The traffic volumes that were connected for this assessment were conducted in December 2022 and were adjusted to account for seasonal fluctuations in the traffic volumes as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. They're also connected while schools working, right, versus project presentation. Overall, the results of the traffic study, the project will not result in a substantial change, a substantial impact on operating conditions within the study area, and the, what we call, project-related impact can be defined as an increase. what we call, project-related impacts can be defined as an increase in average motor delay that caused an increase in queueing of up to just one vehicle. There were no safety deficiencies identified at any of the study area intersections and lines of sight at the two private side driveways. I see work being made to exceed the recommended minimums of function and safety. Here you can see the site location map, it relates to the existing program network. You have 106 and Carver Street. What's shaded is technically the whole project site, these are the property lines, but where the construction for the building likely to take place will be along the frontage of 106 here. Let's see if I can get this too close. This is the study area that we assessed for the project. We looked at two unsignaled intersections. We looked at 106 and the Davis Automotive Center West driveway, and then 106 at Carver Street and the Davis Automotive Center East driveway, as well as the two, as well as the two driveways that will afford access to the project site. One will come out on the south side, 106 here, and the one will come out Carver Street there, approximately 75 feet, I believe, south of 106. As I discussed previously, the traffic volumes were adjusted for seasonality as well as for COVID, based on a review of traffic volumes in the area. December traffic volumes are roughly 17, 18% below average month conditions, so according to Masstow's standards, we adjust those up to average month conditions by those 18%. A review of pre-COVID, or as we call it, 19, traffic volumes in the area indicate that the volumes and vehicles are roughly similar to pre-COVID. And in addition to that, after the publication of our assessment, Masstow has come out and said that any traffic volumes collected post-March 2022 are considered the new normal and do not need to be adjusted for COVID. There are some exceptions, like in areas that have predominantly office use by office parks and such, not really Halifax. And with that adjustment in mind, with the 18% adjustment in mind, Route 106 carries approximately 19,000 vehicles over the course of an average weekday, with about 16,000 and 3,000 less over the course of an average Saturday, with 1,300 vehicles during the weekday morning peak hour, and that happens during your commuter peak hours between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM. This one specifically was 7:30 to 8:30 AM was peak, with 1,800 vehicles during the weekday evening peak hour, which was 5:00 PM, and 1,500 vehicles during the Saturday midday peak hour, which was 11:45 to 12:45 AM. This shows the trip generation of the project. The vehicles both in and out will be generated. In the grand scheme of things, this is a very small development with uses that are... When you look at something like a coffee shop, that's a very high generator. Something like office space or retail, not the smallest, but certainly in the grand scheme of things, even with the size of the post, 5,000 square feet, relatively small. Using data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or the ITE, for both an office component and retail component, those get summed up into the total trips. And we expect the project to generate 172 trips, and those are one-way trips. So that's one vehicle left running, counts as an entry trip, one vehicle delighted in is an exit trip for the total trips both in and out of 172. So 172 over the course of an average weekday with 10 trips in the morning, mainly going to the office. It can vary based on what kind of retail goes in, but most are trips that go to the office use. Then you see a hike during the weekday evening of 34 vehicle trips where more, those are people leaving the office space and using the retail, so that's why there's a three, almost four times larger trips during the weekday evening. We estimate 220 trips on a Saturday, so more than during the weekday, but that is once again relative to the retail, less so the office space. There may be some trips when it's a Saturday, so you would expect less from office use and then 17 trips during the Saturday midday, once again mainly retail.
Anything on Sunday?
Sunday, we would expect to see approximately 12 or less than a Saturday for most uses. We don't look at Sunday. If there's something like a church or something like that, we would expect to see a peak, but just in, in general, traffic volumes on Sundays, both just ambiently on the road and generated by projects, are often less than on Saturdays or during the weekday.
Some of the traffic would be the bottom line.
With these numbers in mind, we can kind of jump back to what I talked about earlier with how many vehicles are on the road. So during the, on 106 during the weekday morning, there's about 13,000. During the weekday evening, there's about 18,000, ah, sorry.
1,800.
Big difference. 13,000, 1,800, and then 1,500 during the Saturday. So we kind of take that step back and look through the lens of the, the total number of vehicles over the course of the hour. Not most, but it's during the weekday evening, it's about a 2% increase, so the last 1.8% increase in vehicles and traffic as a result of this project. So, very much. And then you can also look at that as, at its peak, which is 34 trips over the course of an hour, that comes down to a little, one new vehicle, a little over every two minutes. A new vehicle every two minutes is on the roadway.
It's upside down.
Okay. These are the specials that we use for the generated trips. We did two different distributions, one for the retail, one for the office. The office is generated based on existing trips in the area, as we would expect the majority of retail trips to come from presence of Halifax, maybe from nearby towns. Some of them might already be on 106, will be driving by, will stop by, so that's why we use existing conditions for that. And then for the office use, we looked at US Census data for workers working in the Town of Halifax. You can see they're both roughly the same, with a slight majority coming from the west on 106. But we took the trips generated by the project, put them over these distributions, and then added them to the roadway network, and then we ran our traffic operations analysis for the two intersection dimension as well as the driveways. And the outcomes of that were what I had talked about earlier, with saying that the main impact of the project is revenue. It can be described as an increase in average motor delay that resulted in an increase in queueing of up to just one vehicle, and that was across the board for all the intersections. Now, with that being said, a lot of culture live in town and drive on 106 frequently. Many, many driveways and side streets along 106, specifically in terms of the peak hours, there are extended delays when you're trying to, to get on to the roadway, and we did see that on both Carver Street and both the automotive center driveways. We saw what's called a level service E or NOS. We saw level service E and level service F, where those were just as school grades, which essentially your A is your best, your F is your worst. Now, that being said, these are similar to many other driveways, side streets on major roads across the Commonwealth. They're, they're very common with unsignaled intersections, just because the free flow on the main road, cars just tend to back up on the side streets. But the, the important thing, which I know I keep addressing, is that it's just the, the project related impacts are just an increase in queuing of up to one vehicle, which is not super perceivable to the average motorists. If you're coming north on Carver Street instead of waiting behind six or seven vehicles, you're now waiting behind seven or eight vehicles. And that's kind of the, the whole outcome of the traffic thing. And then similarly to Carver Street and the two automotive driveways, we saw similar operations at the project site driveway on 106 coming out here. It was the same thing, level service F, but the queuing within the site was only up to one vehicle, so essentially one vehicle waiting to turn, and then another vehicle queuing behind them, and that can be easily contained within the project site. It won't prevent new vehicles from entering the project site, it won't stop the movement of other vehicles, pedestrians, or bicyclists along 106. And we saw similar operations at the driveway on Carver Street, acknowledging that when queuing on Carver Street backs up, you may have to wait in turn, wait in line for somebody to let you in, in, to, on Carver Street. But same thing, up to two vehicles that, that can be contained in that portion of the project. And then we did discuss some recommendations on site access and circulation for the project as well, so let's quickly go through those. The project's driveway will be a minimum of 24 feet in width and will be designed to accommodate fire engines in case of emergency. Where there is a permanent parking, the driveway behind the parking should be designed such that there is sufficient width to facilitate parking maneuvers, getting into a site, getting into a space, getting out of a space. Vehicles exiting the private site should be placed under stop control with a stop sign and a stop provided. All signs of pavement markings to be installed within the private site should conform to the applicable standards, in this case it's the main control devices and ATCD. Getting back to sight lines, the existing trees and vegetations that are located within the site triangles of the driveways, so those are your sitting, waiting to turn out, and you're looking left or right, you need to make sure that those triangles are clear. And so make sure that the trees and vegetation is trimmed and removed to afford those lines of sight. There is a real estate sign on the project site now, that should be relocated or removed and sunsetted also, it does not restricts lines of sight. And lastly, any additional signs, landscapes, any snowbanks, anything like that should not be placed such that it restricts those lines of sight. So I know that was probably way too long and very boring, so thank you for, thank you for saying anything to that, and I'll be here to answer any further questions that we can have.
We didn't feel the need to do 105 in any of this. I know it's a little farther away, but it has a large impact, so that would, that would be something that I would wonder about is Route 105 and how it enters onto 106.
So 105 would operate very similarly to a Carver Street or those driveways. It would probably be similar level service, similar queuing. The reason why it, it wasn't selected is because we're sending roughly 50% of traffic that way, and we...
50% of traffic westbound?
Yes.
Okay.
Fifty-seven.
57% of office and 50% of retail. And if you go back and we kind of look at the numbers again, 50% of 10, five vehicle trips over the course of all hour, that's more or equal to 12 minutes. 34, 17 over the course of an hour, that's a little more complicated math, and it's a little vague, but it's, but the, the impact of the project outside of the study area that we selected would be lessened such to the extent that, for these intersections closest to the project, if the outcome of those was, there's no noticeable impact, anything outside of that would be less, essentially.
You guys have any questions on this? Do you think that we should see if anybody here wants to ask any specific questions before we move on to the next segment? I do.
No, I just, you know, as we had mentioned before, it used to be Pine Street and 106 was the number one location for the most accidents in town. Now they have a flashing control up there, a stop sign or whatnot. This intersection is number two. And I didn't know if any of your research involved any comments by the police chief, because I know he, several wild months ago, he was, weeks ago anyway, that he was concerned that even though I don't think there's a fantastic increase to the volume with this particular petition, nevertheless, we're still talking 19,000 average daily cars. It's a lot of cars. And it's, well, you know, maybe you had feedback from, you know, the petition of back when we were having meetings that, you know, even the gentleman from the highway department saying that there could be eight, 10, 12 cars back up on Carver Street trying to, trying to get out onto Puma. And again, it, I don't think, I don't think it's fair to compare the, the traffic going in and out of the mobile station to what this would generate, because, you know, the average cars coming in and out, in and out of there, it's, makes for a pretty big, substantial pretty big concern.
Yes.
For us as an office... Can you hold on a second, had you spoken with the police chief or anything on that?
We had not spoken with the police chief, but what we did do as part of the project was we did go and Masstow has a online crash poll, so we polled crash data for the past five years, or for the most recent five-year period they have, about, which is 2016 through 2020, for both of the intersections. And then Masstow has crash rates per million cars entering an intersection, and an intersection is deemed to be a, a high crash location if the rate is higher than the, if the rate for the intersection is higher than what Masstow puts forward. And for both of these intersections, their rates were below. During this five-year period, we found that there were 10 crashes at the 106 Carver Street intersection, so based on Masstow's standard of whether intersection is a safe or not safe, this was deemed...
Is this considered a high crash?
There is also something else Masstow puts together, which is a high crash location list.
Right.
And this intersection was also not...
Was on that.
Was not on that. So the rate was below the average crash rate for interceptions, and it also was not able to say high crash location.
Okay, thanks.
I don't see anything here from the police chief. Does anybody...
Would you like us to start with Jenny or...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have anybody here that wanted to ask him any questions before we moved on. Do you mind going up, Mr. Steele? And state your name and the address, please, for the record.
I'm Steel, line five oh, right, right across the street from the site. Couple things, who paid for the, for the traffic site?
The applicant.
Okay, I'm sorry, say it again.
The applicant.
Okay, the applicant does. And I understand about the, the low rate of, of extra cars that would be brought on here, but I think, well, we had mentioned two, is the, just the number of cars that are in out. Okay, not necessarily, not that we're adding more cars, oh yeah, go back and forth on what it is, but it's, it's the site itself, not the site, this site, the whole area of the mobile gas station, Davis, Clydesdale, Bosworth, Stonyware, and then 105. Those, all those combinations together really do a job on the traffic, so my so that when you're coming out Carver Street and you really need to get out, you... get out, you don't go to the end of Carver Street, you cut through the mobile station. Because for some reason that seems to be an easier way of getting out. I don't think, and again, you know, well, brought it up and, and, uh, it's certainly an idea, but I don't think it would really work as a, as a, as a blinking light kind of thing. Any kind of light there is not going to make anything, make it work. Uh, so my, again, my concerns are it's, it's crazy, it's a crazy area, even compared to, uh, Stockton Drive and Walmart and down that, those areas. Uh, this is a, uh, it's, it's not a very, um, well-planned out area from days now by that it's not used to holding 19,000 cars a day. And I, and it's really thick that we have to think about, um, how much can we add, which it sounds like not a lot, but it's, it's just not, it's already, uh, a tough place to be. And, uh, so I think that's something that we, we have to consider. Um, and, uh, and on a sideline, uh, I'm here, I'm not sure how many people are here for that reason. Uh, I just happened to be lucky enough to check my, um, my phone to see if this was going to happen today. And I was thrown off where it said to be continued, uh, be continued. I wasn't sure whether it meant that this was going on for another time or if it was going on today. Um, I know there are other people concerned, but it's the same thing that we talked about before at some of the other meetings we've been to. Uh, it's hard to get the word out when you look at, and I, I mean, I have in my mind every Thursday to check and see what the plane was going to be. Uh, and, uh, I just happened to be upright. There've been a couple times where I wasn't sure, uh, what was going on. So, and, I mean, I'm here, I'm hoping that we do get to listen to some other people who are, who discuss. Um, I, I'm just very, very concerned about, uh, just the area overall, how, how tough it is to be in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Chris, why don't you run from the hatch, sir?
Do you want to use the tripod so that you can...
Yes.
Okay.
So something, I want to bring up, Mr. Steele has brought it up. So now it's involving, it's a certain times of the day, 2:30, 3:30, 4, 5 o'clock, it's a lot of life shifts that let employees out at the 44 area. And they all come down Pavestreet, they'll back up to here sometimes. And I stopped going here at those times of the day, it still happens. I was sitting here, as he said, if the queue didn't have it, you can't pull out, you sit there and wait and wait, Pavestreet's backing up. I went to pull out, the guy behind me did feel like he wanted to wait any longer, also tried to pull out on the other side of there. Now we're too wide, I can't get into this lane, I almost had a guy hit on, they almost hit the sidewalk. The same time, while the cars don't want to wait, they cut through mobile, two guys side by side trying to pull on 106 at the same time. So when this goes in, what's supposed to stop all these people that don't want to wait now have a third outlet? Does try to cut everything off?
Well, the outlet won't go through.
It is a separate part of us.
Like it won't go through the... Okay, but still, all that going on and another entrance?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Totally.
Because they figured out shortcuts, so they can have to mobile, in the back of the mobile, they had a Pavestreet.
Yep.
And the same thing as the steel said, I started to have to continue to, and there was no time. So I didn't really think it was a meeting. It was just something that was on...
We're not doing times on the agenda anymore, we're just putting them in order of how we can take them. We're trying it out, but this is good feedback for us because what was it like a month ago that we decided that we would do it this way to prevent, um, a backup? Like if somebody was on for seven and they didn't show up, but the 7:30 was here, then we could take them where if we had a time, we couldn't, we'd have to wait. But the feedback from you guys is great because it's really just something we're trying. Um, so if you guys, two people tonight have said, said the same thing, so maybe we will reconsider that.
Or some type of time line, just with no time on the agenda, it just looked like it was some discussion.
Yeah, meeting starts at seven and it's on to the hearing. Yep. Thank you, Chris, that's good information. Jeremy?
Uh, Jeremy, listening to that issue, I would say, I would agree as well. Uh, I think we need to be thinking about 10 years in the future, how the traffic is going to be, and that's not the fault of the app or anything like that. But if you, if you drive down 106, 105, 58, all the buildings, all the new industrial parks, the housing units, think about 10 years in the future, it's not going to be maintainable on that road.
I think, uh, just a, just a little addition on to that. Originally, Walmart was going in, I think Mr. Mizrahi was on the board also at that time. There was also, uh, 19,000 or 18 and change, if I remember correctly, average daily car count when Walmart was going in. How long ago was that? Uh, yikes, 80s? No, 90s.
90s.
Had to be 90 something. And so the, the, the traffic isn't going away, like, like you said, but it's, it's been, uh, it's been up there. It, it close to, it was 18 and, I believe it was 18,000 and change way back then.
At 58 and 106.
Yes.
I wonder what it was.
The study, I believe, said 106, that was the average daily car count. So one was done on 106. Remember the, they put the tubes out and you ran over them and they counted them and...
Yep.
So it was on 106. So, uh, like, like you said, traffic's not going to, it's a state highway. You know, it's, uh, there's really not much you can do. I, I mean, uh, even now, before this has even developed to beyond the talking spaces, we heard, uh, Mr. Hayward say that they get backed up 12, 15 cars on Carver Street, which has nothing to do with this project. But that's what it's been like and that's what we're dealing with. And, uh, again, you know, it's, uh, it, it is a piece of property that, you know, is zoned and can't be used, deemed useless, you know, uh, is a right to certainly put up there and, uh, and to build there. But in the same breath too, that is a treacherous intersection, you know, and how, how else can you manage it? You, you can't go and say, oh, Clyde Old Bosworth, now all the residents down, they have to go all the other way. You know what? There's no, the, the traffic situation, the car count is always going to be there.
Well, I mean, something really should be done as far as a light or something if it's that bad.
That's what I suggested, so I, I don't...
And I don't mean a blinking light.
No, no, I mean a regular light. That I don't see how that, I don't see how that wouldn't work. You know, even if, even as far as coming out of Clyde Old Bosworth, at least you're stopping traffic at, at the intersection of Carver and 106. At least, you know, to give them a chance to get out, but they don't have a chance to get out now. You know, you're got one foot on the brake and one on the gas, trying, trying to figure out when you can go. I, I personally, and there was people in, who live in, residents in the area that were opposed to, uh, a traffic like there, but again, I don't see how that wouldn't work. I don't, how it would alleviate the congestion at least somewhat.
At some point, it seems like it's going to be inevitable.
Right. And even if it's, if it's like, uh, the light at Walmart where there's, uh, well, it's the old, used to be a plate in the, in the ground, you don't do that anymore, now it's a, you know, it's a camera. And, uh, so if nobody was coming up Carver Street, you know, traffic could still flow both east and west on, on, on Plymouth. But, uh, again, I agree with you, I, I don't see how that wouldn't work and to some point down the future, it's, like you said, it's probably inevitable.
Yeah, unfortunately.
It's dangerous. We've all lived here, we've all seen the, the crashes there, we've all seen, too many, too many times myself have responded there, it's, and, uh, it's, it's busy.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
One thing that I will have to say, and I jump ahead here, we kind of move more into the, uh, traffic cycle, but, Phil, before that, I'm looking 10 years in the future. Um, one thing that is standard for MASTO for all traffic sites is we do look seven years into the future. Um, so we had our existing, uh, year, our existing traffic ones that we adjusted, uh, to the ever front that's existing, that we look seven years in the future. We call that the no built, the future, hit the project. Didn't get built, and then we compare that to the seven years with the project. Um, so that was just kind of something that I did want to say, acknowledging that totally correct, we should be looking in the future to make sure that, yes, traffic, what is the traffic now and what will traffic be? So that's just kind of...
Do you do that based on the zoning bylaws of the town currently? How do you, how do you do that seven year stretch? Like, would you be saying, okay, if, if, if everything that now can be built in seven years, like by our zoning laws, like how we have setbacks in certain uses without any changes?
So what we do is pretty much two parts. We do kind of do that. I didn't specifically work on this project, but we would reach out to, it might have been, uh, one of you, it might have been the town planner, if one exists, and we just kind of say, okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, we, we kind of say, hey, we're doing the traffic study here, are there any other developments in the area that might affect traffic that we should include for our future years? So that's one. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head, any word identified, I can find that out for you.
Okay.
The other part is we then apply a general background traffic growth rate. So we look at, MASTO has account stations in the area that count cars every day. So we look at the general growth at those account stations, uh, per year. Most of the time we find it's one, 1.5% growth per year. So we comp out that annually over seven years. So it's kind of a conservative look at, here's just the baseline growth, about a little over 7%. It comes up to be 7.2%, I believe, as well as if there's any identified additional projects.
Have you done any projects in Weymouth or Situate lately?
Uh, both, yes.
Um, what was the average count from, um, the last several years on those and their, and their increases?
I go over it off the top of my head, but like I said, so most of the time we're 1.5. Um, they can track all those. Weymouth was probably more pushing here, 1.5. Um, and we also did, we did a lot on the Baiting Northwood Hospital, or Southern Hospital. So that, that area is being sold out a lot. Uh, so that would be more previous to the 1.5 Situate, it was more residential, that was probably closer to 01. Um, but that's just expected, like I don't know about my head.
Okay. Could you get us those numbers?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I hate to go back, back and forth, but, uh, I just want to bring up what Brad had said about, and I think the rest of you had said about the lights, something that we talked about is residents. And, uh, most of the residents, not all, don't leave the light, would work, though Brad has a police background. Um, just because when that light goes red, it's an exorbitant amount of cars. It's not your average everyday red. And you do see it a little bit, uh, in, in the Walmart light, actually 58 and, um, 106 light, especially sometime around 4 o'clock when people are either coming and going, Kingston. Uh, the line goes, from, from that light goes past the condominiums, past tumblies, and, uh, and then it changes really quickly. Uh, and, and now we're going from, and this is as relevant, but we can listen to both of them, years, from no lights ever in Halifax to, you know, three or four or five in a two-lane radius. Uh, so you can imagine, stop, go, stop, go, stop, go, that you would get. And, and even though stop, you know, it sounds like a good idea, uh, you're just going to get a large buildup, especially during those peak times. Uh, yeah, nothing to do with, uh, the, the project itself, though, and I know it's going to lead to a later on, retail, that where the hour is, is, seems to be a question mark with, what's that going to be? Because that could certainly add, take away on numbers that, you know, we talked about. But the light, I just have, I want to make sure I, I mentioned that when we brought, kind of picked the test. It's going to stop a lot of guys. It might help things, but there will probably be a lot of people really road rage on, who want to get out of it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Corrigan?
Hi, I'm Fred Corrigan. I live down in Rosewood, and I didn't expect to be talking about this tonight. But back in November, I gave a talk to our traffic safety committee on the speed limit in Halifax. And we have a rather stupid business zone, 25 mile hobo zone, that goes from the national property in Route 58. Okay? That's our business zone at 25 miles an hour. The rest of the time, just jump on it and go 35 miles an hour. Now this gentleman was just talking about the backup in the afternoon when the train is coming in, the people are coming in. Part of that is the fault of the speed limit. The other side of Cumberland Farms is 40 miles an hour. You can come down from, from Kingston Town Line all the way to the traffic light, or all the way to the vet area at 40 miles an hour. Okay? Now you're definitely going to back up. Why? Because we're driving too fast. Let me give you an example. If we made the speed limit from the mobile station to the second, to the main entrance to Halifax, Oklahoma City, you got that visualized? Make it 25 miles an hour. What is that going to cost the commute? The difference between traveling that distance at 35 miles an hour or 25 miles an hour is two minutes.
Hold on right there on that one. Bart, are we allowed to change the speed limit of the state highway?
Two things. Uh, from what I understand, yes, the, uh, the selectmen can change the, like Kingston did. Kingston changed it to 25 miles an hour. The only thing I, I disagree with is the four-way intersection at 58 and 106, going all four ways, east, west, north, and south, is 25 miles an hour.
It is not.
Okay, I'll bring citations, that's Watson, common...
I've done my homework. If you come up and the 25 mile an hour speed limit is 200 feet from the traffic light at 58.
Right.
Up to that point, you're just jamming in.
Right, but at the intersection is what I said.
Right. But if you're coming north on 58, there is no 25 mile an hour speed limit. And I told that to the traffic committee, that sign's been missing.
Right, the sign's missing, it's still 25 miles an hour.
It's a no sign, it's 25 miles an hour.
No, well, that's not true. If it, whether the sign's there or not, the speed limit's 25 miles an hour. Because it's missing doesn't mean cop blind, you can go however fast you want, it's still 25 miles an hour.
But it's so involved with the traffic, like the president was just going to go down. And I'm not saying to cut it down on 58, I'm saying cut it down on 106. Because if you cut it down to 25 miles an hour, now, when, if that traffic is slow, you haven't got this rush after you get through the light and jump on the pedal, because now if you were told you're going to drive 25 miles an hour...
I totally see what your point is, however, it's the amount of cars as well, because you, we can't do anything about the fact that on East 106 at, from 5, if we're at 58, East 106, it backs up past the stardom and, um, graveyard. So like, it's not the speed of getting up there in the heavy traffic hours, but I do see what you're saying as far as like different things to help it.
If everybody were traveling at that 25 miles an hour, it would move a lot, spoke better. The other thing is, is even in less peak hours, I realize it's a certain time here in the afternoon and in the morning where it's really jamming, there's not much you can do. But if everybody said, okay, don't want to jump on that travel, because all you're going to do is get a ticket. Okay? And if the speed limit's 25, instead of 35, your fine just went from $200 to $400, and you don't want to be paying that fine because of the difference in the speed limit.
Right. I understand all of that. Thank you.
Okay.
Want to move on to you, Jim? It's all set up over here, Jim.
Good evening, I'm Jim Powell with Upback Engineering. And, uh, just to refresh your memories of when we last met with you guys several months ago, uh, we were still dealing with the conservation commission on the Cleveland line, that has been resolved. And so we have submitted this plan...
And so we had submitted this plan back in January to make some minor revisions to the layout to accommodate, there was a small change in the button line, the east end of the cycle. And it forced us to, the commission wanted us to remove any work over 50-foot buffers and to prevent the renovations. So that's what we've done here. And we know what there are significant changes to the site layout at all. We're still proposing a 4,950 square foot building. And we have the two parking areas, the main area in front of the building, and then a permeable pavement, permeable parking area for some of the additional parking spaces off of Carver Street. So there were no changes to this layout. It was just, we had to get the work out of 50-foot buffers on, so we're proposing five compact car spaces, which would require a waiver from Woods Regulations. We're proposing those as eight foot by 16 foot, which is fairly typical for a compact car space. So otherwise, we made some changes to the drainage layout. Previously, we had an open basin, open infiltration basin. We're proposing underground chambers there. So that's essentially the changes that we made. And we also got the traffic study done. So I think those are the two primary changes that have occurred since our last meeting with you guys.
Do you have a subject system engineered yet?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a subject system engineered yet? Have you started that?
Yeah, it's part of the supplemental. We haven't submitted it to the board of health yet, but it's a fairly small system.
Yeah. I just knew that was one of the comments that we had.
What was parking spaces decreased to from one to one that we were looking through? Or if we were?
So standard, these spaces tend to be like 10 foot.
Oh, the same number?
Yes, the same number. It's been smaller. Just five of the spaces were smaller. And that's a fairly typical thing in many towns' regulations to accommodate some compact.
You still have the correct number of spaces based on the retail square footage?
Yes. Based on 175 square foot office or?
What kind of retail are you proposing to put in there now? Is there any development on that?
For us, it's going to be the primary office. It's not going to be high-volume, it's just going to be us at the office and museum retailers. So if customers want to come in and get samples or for us to sell our product, not, I like to be just a boutique.
Like what?
Cranberries.
Just cranberry, whole cranberry.
Craisins or whatever.
Juices and stuff, just to show samples.
And in the future, would you be planning to maybe rent out retail space there?
Right now, that's not our goal. Our goal is for our sole use.
Right. So we have parking noted, consider for retail. So right now, if it was, you know, lower retail traffic, but in the future, you were going to put in, I don't know, what do you think? Convenience store or?
For us, the change used to be kind of.
Correct.
So we hired a traffic engineer for the traffic study. I believe they did the calculation for the worst case scenario retail on our use. We have an office as well down the street on 311 and 313. It's in the street, right behind the insurance office. It's just less five cars, and we need more space for our office.
Right.
So that's the building we're planning on building. It's a two-story office. Well, first floor retail is usually the typical use and second floor office. But based on the town's parking standards, it's less space for 175 square feet either use. And secondly, hopefully, it's just from my understanding of how business works, we don't want to gain too much competition as well. We have a gas station right across the street, we wouldn't be a convenience store.
Yeah, I was just picking a.
For us, our use would be more office use than retail. You know, an accountant, dentist's office, a lawyer's office. Not high-volume, but somebody who will utilize the space. Utilize the view as well as the space.
What is the?
Higher volume location, we would look for a high-volume business. This is not a high-volume location for us.
What are the dimensions of the building? Huh?
It is 25, maybe 45, 50. And then there's a.
It's a nunchuck.
Yeah. So 40 by 25, and I'm sorry? Thank you.
You guys have a copy of that page?
She too has the dimensions of the building.
Yeah.
She too?
Do you want to see the table? You have it. Yeah, it's 40 feet by 75, by 25.
They didn't bring us the box, they have to go get it if we want. I was just curious, like for, you know.
75 feet long. This would be 25 and 50.
And you're not ahead of the addition to the antique next door, it's back that far.
We had to do a little bit of circle group, and we followed their advice. And once we get a building there, we'll all put them on, contractual designs.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we should have Pat give his.
Yeah, there's some remarks.
Pat? Oh. You can, Miss, yes, Mr. Steele, yes. Do you want to have a microphone so you don't have to get all mixed in?
Yes.
Okay.
So, talking about the buildings, the building is the most familiar and all that kind of stuff. I did have to be spooked and drove down to 311.
Yes.
And just to see what the building looked like. And it was certainly not what this building is like. But I had some concerns of the trucks that were in the back. I mean, there were a number of trucks that were parked in the back of the building, all kinds of like trucks and all type of.
No, which property is that?
I guess you can go down the street here on the left.
Borak? That parking lot, Borak parking lot?
Yeah, that, it's behind the.
So it's Borak, and then you have the condo offices.
That go back is also a house back. I don't know if it's a let's.
Oh, okay.
I think you started to go.
Yep, you are.
So that's Mr. Borak's garage.
Okay, so that's not.
No, no.
So where are you?
Where are the buildings there? Association of 313, Long Street.
Okay, well, then on the stage.
No, are you located right next to Lionville or Nani's, whatever?
Yeah, right across this.
Is that where you're talking about?
No, I was talking about on the left here by the cabinet.
Okay, Galatics.
I thought I had the right road a little bit.
Okay.
Maybe I did, so I apologize on that.
No worries.
The base, my other concern was, again, kind of like question marks on what's going upstairs and what's going on downstairs. You mentioned that this office always is. Now, is that strictly upstairs? And then there's going to be something different downstairs? Retail being cranberries and that, and that way, are you talking about this stuff to be on either floor?
No, so when it comes to a building and the use of such and such building, it's wise for an office or a building to be separate. And it's unwise to have retail and office in the same room.
Right.
So the differential would be a wall, stairwell, a separate unit itself.
So the upstairs, again, the upstairs, just to kind of cut to the chase, the upstairs would be the offices of the personal owners of the place, the Cranberry Association, whatever.
Yeah.
And then the downstairs is where, with anything, Amy mentioned it, a really good check, we knew what the possibilities are that would be going in there. And then, and then, I know you guys mentioned a little bit about, well, if they're going to change it, then it has to come in front of you. I don't know if that's true, if that's the right way of these changes that are made. So again, my concerns would be knowing a little bit more. Because we seem to always know what's going in up the street in Walmart. You know, Starbucks shows up and then they're not showing up, it's a hot thing. We don't, this is more kind of a hazy thing. And it's almost like a handshake, well, we're going to believe exactly what's going to go there, or we're not really sure what's going to go there. Again, living across the street, I certainly have a big concern about signage. You know, the mobile station has signs on it all night. Are there going to be signs there? Again, maybe from a way of topic.
Nope.
So I apologize about that. But these are the kind of things I think most of the residents in the area certainly would like to know. Is it something that's going to draw kids? Now kids have to cross the street. The light comes into play, but they're, you know, it's not a very easy street to cross. And there are more and more young kids in the area. So again, to me, there still seems to be some questions that have to be answered. You know, again, as I said before, it's nice to have a handshake and say, okay, go to it. Sounds good, sounds great, get back, and then all of a sudden, things change. And now it's a different building, and now it's a different aspect of what's going to happen. You know, something that's pushed back in further, obviously, is in our residents. You know, it is nicer, there's trees around it, you know, those kind of things. But still, it's just kind of hazy a little bit about the building itself. I understand the top, the bottom, I think it's something to be able to kind of read it to.
Wonderful question. So if I may.
Please.
The four actors, I hope, I'll take them in order as they were made. With regards to signage, we'd be following the law. I believe there's a formula that we use, square footage or I think that number of units. I don't believe we would be going with a lit sign, but more of a sign with a light on it, similar to the other signs that we have on our property down the street. In regards to use, when a business is designed for its building, that's one thing. And when a building is designed for a business, it's another thing. So it's not a drive-through McDonald's, it's not a coffee shop. It's not going to be a business that has a high-volume, high-traffic style business. Those type of businesses need larger, wider parking lots. Those type of businesses need roundabouts. They need access around the perimeter of the building itself as well. So the main won't be going.
Will you just pull that microphone towards you so that we can make sure that you? Thanks.
So the main would be something that would go in there. And use as well is why we're here. We're not looking to put a daycare, so we wouldn't be drawing children like the daycare down the street on Carver Street. I believe there's a daycare there. Because it would have to fit certain criteria, certain shapes, certain toiletries, bathrooms would have to be certain shapes and configurations. For us, we designed the building for a small boutique as well as office space. Because that's what we need for our use. If we sell the building or find a different tenant to occupy that building, the building shape's not changing, nor is the building itself going to change. The colors on the inside might be painted differently. The interior layout might be laid out differently depending on structural walls and whatnot. But the face of the building, the shape of the building are going to stay the same. They're going to obey the historical district. The design we came up with is in symphony of the historical properties up in Long Street. Just like the town hall where we're located. We're located on the same speedy highway. And there might be even more traffic coming in out of this town hall in front of the high school and the school than is going to come out of a building that has one entrance on that parking lot and one entrance on the other parking lot. And I believe crossing on the street, as you have stated as well, we have put in an updated portion of our design to have a process in the sidewalk where the parking lots are connected on the interior of the property so that we wouldn't be going out and danger crossing or walking on the exterior, perimeter of the property along the road. For this development, this design, we're looking for our long-term investment for our office use. But when we go to put a guarantee for 100 years, I'm not going to be here in 100 years, we don't know what the building would be used for in 100 years. If the change is going to be that dramatic, whoever the owner is at that time will have to come to the board, go to the board of health, whether it's terms of use and volume of sewage and whatnot, and have to follow guidelines in the board at that time. So for us to do, that is a handshake deal is a permit that we're looking for with civic construction plans that we're going to design. If anything were to change, there's a process in place. So if we want to change the layout, we want to change where the parking spots are, if we want to change the configuration of the building, those changes have to be made now, not after the building is built. I hope that answers the questions that we had. If you guys have anything else to add, here's your mark.
So you're basing your parking on one unit or two?
We're basing our parking on the capacity of the building.
Right. So the total building square footage is 4,950 square feet. So we're basing the parking requirement on 175 square feet per space. So that works out to a total of 29 spaces, which is what we're providing.
Now, to be all transparency, I don't know 29 people. I might not have maybe 10 people in the building, seven if it's just us. So 29 is capacity. And that's if each visitor comes with their own car. If we're going to put a capacity in the building, I think that would be a fire department or a. I think the buildings have their own capacities and their firearms. So just like.
It's fine.
The town will have a 50-person or 100-person limit. If your question's due to the parking lot, it's based on the square footage of the building, right?
I have one thing, if the bottom line and direct response to, you know, similar thing to Mr. Steele brought up also, would you be, would you object to contingency where there would be no overnight parking in the parking lot, whether it be trucks or commercial vehicles?
And what would be the definition of commercial vehicles?
A truck, a truck used for cranberries and whatnot. Other than passenger vehicles, like a pickup truck would be a passenger vehicle. But there'd be no overnight parking of commercial vehicles?
But there'd be no overnight parking of commercial vehicles in the parking lot?
I would be objected to that for one reason. Right now, we own the property and we have electric companies coming and parking there, school buses coming and parking there, random people parking there. When we have a building, I know for me, for a fact, I work until eight, nine o'clock at night. If I'm there working, I'm parking, so.
Right, but you don't do overnight?
No, no.
I'm talking about overnight.
I don't see an issue, but if I need auxiliary parking for staff or if my workers are picking at, and they're driving my vehicles, they may have their personal cars parked there. That would be the only issue I would see.
Are you talking about big trucks?
Are you talking about 18-wheelers and trailers?
No, 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 not at all. Oh, well, yes, you're talking about using them there overnight.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about accepting a passenger vehicle.
Oh, okay. This parking lot is not designed for.
Right, yeah.
So it's not.
Yeah, there's no.
Dump trucks or anything like that, no, why would you?
I don't have a use for that.
Excuse me.
We're already by the farm.
Right, they're all kept down there, down there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you don't even have a street, I'm not gonna break them off here.
Yeah.
Gosh, I definitely don't think you'd pass those turning radiuses.
No, no, so, but if my guys, you know, leaving their personal tires, then they're using my trucks as your vehicle. And during our pick and season, they're parking, you know, it's paved and it's a private property, so.
That's ungood with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Brennan?
Thanks.
Excuse me. Pat Brennan, which would be the, um, early plan and the drainage analysis report. I did not review the traffic, so I didn't have that. I would say that the presentation that was provided, I concur with his findings. It's a fairly low traffic generator. So I think, I think his findings are pretty much what I would find if I was to offer it anyway. So I did send a letter of the word last week, ten comments. I want to move real quickly. The first comment Jim had touched on, and that was the, um, actually, um, gave her the first sheet.
The parking?
That was the, the fact that spaces over here are smaller than what you buy for the buyers. As you mentioned, they're eight by 16 rather than the 10 by 20. So we need some relief to allow for that size, reduced size parking spaces. And then I had a question, because basically what was provided to me was the original plan set and this one sheet which has the bylaws ahead. So there's some discrepancies between the two. One of the discrepancies was the walkway here that goes from the saddle parking, basically, over to the building. And this plan, it's called gravel park, gravel walkway. The previous set of plans was paved, so we just need some clarification on that, but it's gonna be gravel paved for ADA compliance, which we, it's paved or some type of stonewall system that actually complies with the ADA surface. My next one is about maintenance on the subsurface system. It's not a big deal, I'm sure they can take care of that. They have a kit quite burned around the parking lot. Typically, you put the first course of pavement down, and then later on, you put the top course down. What I'm asking for is that they put the kit quite burned down with the first course, so it's actually put down with both. If you don't put that, until that top course goes down, there's no way to control snowmower, which is much right off of ADA. So that's the reason for that.
Is that a problem?
No.
I just saw you put your head in something.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't understand the process of it. The next one is about a non-able, I'm sure Jim could care about it. It's got to do with the drainage and the compliance with the storm, the DPA standards. Because it's gonna be used for retail, they should have identified loading area on the plan for deliveries and so forth. If they propose exterior lighting, which I assume they will, but it's gonna be retail and operated at the dark, they need to provide you with proposed, show the proposed lighting specifications and everything so we can make sure it complies with the bylaws and doesn't spill out to the adjacent properties and so forth.
I think for that, I am just gonna wait for the historical design. Putting a projector light on the building might affect some of their design qualities, or if you just put a pedestal light.
It'll all be shielded and everything, is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, yeah, the dark sky compliance is where everybody goes by now. But the pedestal, you know, pedestal lights are obviously, they're not a nuisance to adjacent properties. It's the whole amount of advice that's shown in this spot. We're not looking for the flashlights. I just asked them to identify areas with snow storage on the plans. My last two comments are more informational than, you know, critical per se. Their proposed site disturbance is about 36,500 square feet, which is below your threshold for your stonewall bylaw. So they don't need to comply with that bylaw. However, I did review it based on state standards when it comes to stonewall. And then the drainage analysis review was based on the original design, not this modified design. And I talked to Jim about this, and the reason why they haven't updated everything yet is mainly because they wanted to get the board's, to see the board's opinion of the provided layout before going ahead and doing the full design on the rest of the plans and so forth. But he did provide, he did run an analysis on this underground, underground system. Everybody asks for payment there, it does show that they'll, they'll meet all the standards. But they just need to update all of that with, you know.
But speed from what they.
Yes, yes.
Did you?
Yes.
Stop work.
Yeah, the calculation showed that it'll work. I just have to see it.
See the numbers.
Yeah. Yeah. Those were really the only comments that I had at this point. Does anybody have any questions to be having answer?
Chris?
You said a question, it's a little about this project, but more too, as the town's growing, more projects. Those are the meeting, one of the last meetings, it was specifically mentioned the dark sky regulations. Do we have anything in the bylaws? Is that new to how that, you know, those regulations?
I'm sorry, which?
As the town grows, you know, you see them glow a light all night through the town, there's more and more businesses coming. Have we specifically put regulations in to do businesses like the dark skies and stuff? I mean, it's nothing to do with the lighting industry.
Not to my knowledge, I don't have it. We don't have it in chapter 167 anyway.
The water controls with neighborhoods nearby and the glow of light at night.
Yep.
So something to look into with the bylaws.
Yep. Thank you.
I do know also, run into some things with the town as far as becoming ADA compliant. Like you said, it's better to do it right up front than the cost to do it later on down the road.
And I was gonna comment on that, it's one of the questions. The upstairs could only be used for an office, because you couldn't have retail out there, because it's not ADA accessible. Unless you put it in a two elevator.
Thanks.
I'm sorry? I think that we should talk about some of Pat's comments. Like, for instance, the proposed, the proposed paved parking spaces for compact spaces. They might have enough spaces, but the smaller spaces, how many of us are down to compact cars now? And yes, it's office, but again, if he sells it, and then I still have the concern with most of the parking is on another lot and not on this, which could be sold off. Remember the house could be sold off, 392?
So if I may.
592, excuse me.
If I may add to those two comments. The second comment, if I can start with that, about we have two separate lots. We had attorney Donald Nagel, the first meeting we attended, and he had clarified with legal that, and recommended to the board as well, that it is possible for us to give a easement of use for the parking lot secondary model. So whether the first lot's sold or not sold, whether the second model's sold or not sold, independent or as a package, having reciprocal trusts, rather reciprocal easements set in place is something that an attorney is able to do. We can make that part of a deep restriction where the easements are attached to it or perpetuated. So hopefully that solves and satisfies the second part of it. The first part of the compact car spots. We, under the conservation commission's requirements for the staying of the 50-foot cover, we were able to shrink down those spots up top. We still have space down the second parking lot, where we were able to add those spots down there. But for use and ease, keeping as many spots closer to the building is more beneficial for us. Well, we have the space, we can pave it up there up top. If we were forced to move two or three lot, two or three spots from up top to down here, we still have the space as well. We're outside of 50-foot cover, we're outside of, uh, as well. So just for geometric purpose and ease of use, we kept it up top.
How many of your employees currently, you said there's seven of you there on a regular basis, have compact cars?
Um, I think I'm the only one who has a big truck. Everybody else has small cars, or they have, this Subaru, I mean, has a small key.
But they're regular, standard-sized cars? I mean, a compact car is a specific definition, correct?
I'm not a car guy, I don't know.
There's compact cars, like a compact car, in my opinion, would be like the small electrical vehicles, the smaller than regular-sized vehicles that we've been driving around. So I was just curious if you had compact car, like your employees drove compact, compact cars?
Um, I don't know.
What's the difference in square footage? I mean, you're talking about a surveying versus SUV, right? It's not a, you know, a dump truck versus a U-Go.
So sure, 25 by 16, I think it was, that's a whole thing, right?
So it's.
It's 128 square feet versus 200 square feet required, yeah.
What I would say anecdotally, in looking at other towns, there's often allowances for compact car spaces, typically as much as 30% of the spaces. In this case, we're proposing five out of the 29, which is.
About six.
That's about 15 to 20 percent. But an eight-by-16 space, that's still a competition.
Most of the states, most of the states.
Yeah, it's not, it's just bigger trucks and SUVs that would be able to park on the space like that.
And I don't think we, we have the ability to predict where the car market's going. So it's all around here, like, 30 years. Right now, it would suffice for our use. I don't even think we're gonna utilize.
I know, it's just our bylaws.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, our bylaws require a specific size. So other towns might do things, but our bylaws don't.
Yeah, but there is some existing compact lots that have smaller spaces than our bylaws.
But they have enough spaces. And then the compact ones will be over, like, you're talking Walmart?
Like elevated routes, they have smaller spaces than, than required by the bylaws.
Yeah.
Pre-existing.
But like, my point is, I think, you know, they do, they have smaller spaces and it works.
Yeah, but it's pre-existing. We still have laws to follow.
I believe what we can do geometrically is probably move one or two down to the lower lot and then angle the remaining ones, but we'd have to do that calculation. We just, we have the opportunity. So whether if it's a geometric layout for preference, how many compact spaces? Or is it, or would it be a different direction to go as to?
I don't know, I always read this, chapter 167. And we were elected to make sure these laws were followed, so that's how I would like the plans to be.
What about the sidewalk there?
I didn't hear.
What about the sidewalk from one parking lot to the building from the, you heard it?
Yeah, no, they just wanna know if it's gonna be gravel or cement. Like, I think for us.
Can it be gravel if it's ADA compliant?
Yeah.
In it? I didn't think it could, I thought.
They have some good compact stuff too.
I thought it had to be same concrete or paves or something like, some asphalt or. I know they were, you know, running into that level here, you know.
But we've done some wilder sanctuary sites with, it's like there's a mulch mix.
Really?
For the trails. And if a lot is going to be, you know, like.
Yeah.
If we were to.
What?
If we spend 30,000 dollars right up the street or something like that. Just to be accurate.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's the catch-22 that we have. So if we're able to get the board's green light on redesigning the lower half, we're able to move the compact spots to the lower half, not all, but a good chunk of them. And then we'll be able to have a better, you know, finalized plan for everyone. Because I believe Mr. Brennan, he needs us to have a finalized plan for him to sign off on.
So to move, to move to compact, you'd have to make less spots in front of the building and add them.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's not gonna affect the building. It's not gonna affect people who can walk up and down.
And doesn't seem like you're gonna have a big crowd there all the time, so you're probably gonna be using all the spaces.
Yeah, and I would be requesting that we pave it either way.
What, the walkway?
Yeah, the remaining of the parking.
Is there, is there a problem with paving that walkway instead of gravel, if you had to?
Um, I believe the justification I have is I like leaving everything as the best as possible. Even with the lower half, I don't think.
Well, I just wondered if there was some conservation had a problem with it.
Oh, no, no, it's outside of the, uh, lines and stuff. I think the only issue that the conservation had was the two or three feet on the perimeter of the compact parking now is within the 50-foot. And they want us to not go into the 50-foot, even though it's already paved. So.
Or gravel.
Gravel.
It's existing gravel.
It's existing gravel, compacted. Our original designers are going right to areas of already compacted, put up a nice burn and leave it where it is. But they want us to pull it back, re-stir the area. We, that's where the two or three feet got lost to the compact spaces.
So I think that they have 10 comments here from Pat that they need to update the plans, loading areas and things of that nature, and that they should come back with this plan.
Is it something that needs to be entered into the record?
Well, we, Pat already read it out loud.
Yeah, although this is.
It's just my things that have been changed since.
So if I may request that we can get specific guidance on the parking lot so that we can satisfy these requirements with items.
I would state that chapter 167 has our parking laws and that he says that we have a 10 by 20-foot space that's required by our bylaw, and I would like you to comply with that. So if you, and there's a loading dock on here that needs to be identified, exterior lighting, areas for snow storage, and the other comments, like, I think that you guys should update the plan.
Have you done one of these before, or is this new for tonight?
I know, we saw, we wanted to make sure that, we wanted to request some of the miniature spots, the compact spots first. We were, well, I was under the impression that we could ask for your guys' guidance on if the town had any different process, but if we have to stick to the 10 by 20. on if the town had any different process, but if we have to stick to the 10-by-20, that's what we'll do.
I'm sorry, real quick, I feel like I'm going to owe my own asking, in trouble. Hours of operation? When, especially when you're starting retail, and again, not to be, but I mean, it could be 9:5, it could be 6, 7, 8, maybe it's 11. Is that something that's on the board, or that's something that you can speak about? And again, regardless of the, retail is like, yes, but you can also make certain issues. Of any retail coming in, I would think that it's going to be, certainly you can have this X amount of time. And if they want to open later, they can say, well, that's not the way it's going to be. Or if that's something that you guys...
We can put hours of restriction.
Yeah, I think that's, again, with the neighborhood, I think that's an important thing to...
I would hope not to be there at 10 o'clock.
I know, I think, this, again, this is what I mean, and I don't mean it in a negative way. I don't like the handshake, I don't mean it that way. You understand that if you don't say it, I've been around long enough, then all of a sudden it comes back. So even though you don't want to be there till 11 o'clock anyway, we've all worked those out. So, you know, individual things are fine, but if it's still staying open till 11, I...
So to be specific, you're looking at retail, like restriction? Like, if he's doing his taxes at 12 o'clock in the morning, that's not what you're talking about?
Well, since some of these kids are open at 8:00, 9:00, and now we get across 106, and...
No, I don't think...
Those kind of things. No, I understand, but if you don't say it, if you don't say it, then, in fact...
What would see, I mean, is it a bylaw?
Well, I think that would just be more courteous of... Yeah, well, it would be more courteous, like, we're talking courteous to the neighborhood here. That wouldn't be, like, necessarily a bylaw.
I think when we, how would I say that? When we go to pull our business permits, I believe they request us to have open hours, whatever as well. I don't foresee our business or any of our potential tenants being open beyond, earlier than 8 o'clock or beyond 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, 9 o'clock.
But that can be your call. What I'm saying is, you can have that hour on your building, so, or you guys want to both have it?
Yeah, I think that's what he's asking. It's just like the middle gas station, how, who is in charge of the gas station's hours?
Well, that was, that's been there forever, so that's way before our time.
Or any other new business, I don't know.
We go over business hours with different businesses as they come in front of us at their next door residential areas and things like that, just to be courteous. But there's not, like, necessarily, there's not, like, a written bylaw about it.
Any other comments or remarks?
No, I would look forward to getting these plans, and I think I've said my thought process on the entire project, so... I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know, guys?
I don't see any issues other than, you know, you have the same with the parking, it's a bylaw, so, and... You know, the traffic study, I don't see any big increase there, and that's pretty minimal. I don't see, I mean, it's a mess there anyway, and I don't think it's going to make any difference, to be honest with you. But everything else seems, you know, just a lot of things like Pat pulled, you know, Pat pointed out that got to address. If you can get the parking lot spaces to work, you know, that saves some aggravation there.
So in regards to, I believe, scheduling, if we're able to turn around and get the edits completed and Mr. Brennan is able to verify, validate, and check them off, when would the board like to start?
We have a meeting on April 6th, and we have a meeting on April...
Because we have a conservation...
Submit, would we submit to the board and have to direct?
Yes, that would be the quickest, most efficient way, yeah. The 20th, April 6th and April 20th.
Technical question, would trigger us to go through the whole group of everybody again? Or would we just...
No, the comments, so we have all the comments, that's the peer review comment?
Oh.
And now you update the plan, and then we go forward.
So I guess I'd ask Pat, which I need to, I need to...
I can turn around, day?
All day, so... I think I defer to the second meeting in April.
Okay, April 20th, okay. Yep, all right. Okay, so we'll see you at April 20th. And, you know, I think, I think I had discussed on the phone with you about the whole meeting times and things like that, but maybe, we might be back to exact times at that point. I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys. I'll put you first on the list, though, okay? Thank you, nice to meet you. We have to make sure that everybody can hear us when we're having conversations back here.
Conservation there, but if it was under, is it 37,000 square feet? It does not have to go through stormwater management.
It's under 43,000, yes.
What was 37,000, they said tonight?
That was the amount they were disturbing.
So if you're not disturbing, or is it just that particular case that...
No, so it's the, so if you read this letter from Pat Brennan, it states... Pat, can you explain to Bert, Ener, and Rick about the disturb law? For stormwater, please, thank you.
If it's over neighbor disturbance, your bylaw kicks in for stormwater management. And that's, I look, I agree with you, my law, it's the exact same, I see them, but... Everybody's got the same bylaw, but it is part of your highway apartments, and the store, the EPA, stormwater. So it's basically what it's doing is making sure that private development is not having adverse impacts on your municipal system. And, you know, up until now, it's not been a lot of regulation on that, seeing how that regulation's in. The towns are all adopted masks, they comply with the EPA permit that they have. And that's what it is, it's just compliance, but the trigger is...
And what are we talking, as far as disturbance goes, at, what is it, 314, 315?
That was the 30,000, hold on, I have it.
So I consider it under the 416 square feet?
This one is under the 416, it was under the 38,000 change. 314 is...
Whoa, okay.
36,500. I just want... Cosiah, can you stand up at the microphone so we can? Thank you very much, Pat, I appreciate it. We're waiting for his site plan review, the peer review on that.
Which one's the city?
Yeah.
That's...
Palm Plaza, yeah.
Didn't Pat make, didn't you make a comment on that?
It wasn't the site plan, it was about his specific use.
His specific use that...
But we needed to, we need to have the peer review on the full site plan, not that. So he was saying that...
So here we go again with the stupid site plan, you know, I mean...
Can you explain to him that we need to have a site plan review based on the fact that so much was, over the 40,000 square feet, over 40,000 square feet was disturbed, and there's stormwater management that kicks in? Can you explain to him about that?
Well, as far as the farm stand, that's not a void then.
Right, so what was disturbed was for the septic?
Yeah.
From my experience?
Please, thanks.
So what was, what was disturbed was for the septic replacement. And as Rick mentioned, they would have had to go for conservation for that, because they were within 100 of the buffer.
But in the recent times, they've also removed from the back of the pavement, and so there's parking beyond the building, and they're adding different, that, they removed all kinds of trees into the back there, so that's all different. There's also another section of conservation that was removed over the last several years next to the car wash where this is actually permitted to go. And they want to add a building that hasn't been there previously, and now another use, so we have parking. And it's not the same original site plan as it was when it was built back in the 60s or the 70s. So this isn't about a use, this is about the entire plan. This isn't, like, we see that you'll, you think that there's nothing wrong with his farm stand. This is about the entire property, not a use.
What does it have to do with the application petition in front of us then?
It's an additional use to the parking that's there.
I mean, this is just my, the way that I write, was the plan that was sent to me was for the 38,750 square feet of area that he was going to use for the farm stand.
Right.
And that was all the plan was supposed to be used for. It does show the use of, it's reaching the background, it shows a limited clearing that's been done. But it doesn't show any other improvements at this time.
Improvements to the 38,000?
Just to the property, oh, not 38,000.
Oh.
So I understand Amy's concern that maybe other stuff is coming. And, you know, one way that you might be able to, you know, make sure that we get a handle on that is if you approve the site plan that's been put in front of you for the 38,000 change square feet, and say anything outside of that, if there's any other changes to the property, they have to go back. And then, at that time, there's probably going to be issues, you know, especially if they start using that cleared area or if they start parking on it, paving anything, then you have to likely do stormwater improvements up there. But in terms of, see, I don't know when your stormwater bylaws are voted in. So it's put in after the term. So stormwater bylaws also, the permanent grant authority of this distribution, so I don't know if they got a...
I mean, when they, it makes sense when they did the septic system, they went through conservation, water health. They had to.
But they didn't do a site plan change with the uses and the added uses. So there's a mechanical building that they want, they now have it for rent, and they're adding, and they're splitting different things inside the building, and...
And it's got nothing to do with the 38,000?
Has nothing to do with it.
The change of use, they still have compacting, which is why it's going to be 38,000 square feet. The clearing, like I said, it was done for the septic system. The, and they clearly got to go to conservation for it, it's within the buffer. Conservation is the board of town that oversees the stormwater permit. So if the stormwater permit, the stormwater bylaw was in effect, when they went to conservation for that, then they likely got a stormwater permit for, at that time.
Yeah, for the whole site.
Yeah, for what they were doing.
Correct. But for under 40,000 square feet, when it's in for it, it does not have to go to stormwater management.
So that's, if it's less than an acre of disturbance, it doesn't have to, you do not need a stormwater permit. However, there is, you can't do, you can't do 20,000 square feet this year, 20,000 square feet next year, 20,000 square feet the year after, that's kind of just one project. So you have to look at the, like Amy said, you have to look at the whole thing, but they, I don't know if they got a stormwater permit through conservation, I assume they did if the bylaw was in effect at that time. And if they did, then they're covered for what they've done already. But I, I don't know about that, I just don't know.
I'll investigate that and I'll let you know. But it wasn't a use permit that we were looking to have a peer review, it was a full site plan for the property.
Right, and that, I mean, that's, and, so when I'm reviewing those things, I got to look at existing conditions, proposed conditions, and all that's shown on that plan is what's there existing and what he's proposing for the farm stand. And from that perspective, from a, you know, an engineering company, that really has no impact on the property. So there's really nothing there. It's, if, like I said, if they start adding asphalt for more parking, that type of thing, then yeah, it's, it's impacts when you get to that part. But that site plan does show, you know, shows the existing building, the existing parking.
No, that's exactly the way I feel about it.
The existing basins up behind it, so...
Yeah.
But again, conservation and, you know...
They definitely would have had to go through all that to do that septic system.
I would assume so, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we'll put it on the next agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You know, from what Pat's saying, when we run to...
Well, we still have to bring it into the next meeting, so...
Why?
We're not, because...
Why can't we do it right now?
Why can't we do it right now?
Because I think there's investigation to be done. He still has something that he needs to look into on April 10th for his variance, and...
Who does?
Who?
Cosiah. He has, he has to go to zoning on April 10th.
For variance on what?
He's the one who told us.
Who, Pat? What Pat just said, right?
No, Cosiah, at the last meeting.
Well, I don't see a problem with it now, I mean, you know, I'm making a motion to approve the farm stand at 416.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No. What's our motion to adjourn?
Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.